We'll call the workshop session to order. We barely have a quorum, but we do have a quorum. And we have two members out tonight. Greg and Leroy are both out this evening.
So council tonight, we want to present our, the results of our resident satisfaction survey. I do want to spend a few minutes bragging on James. A lot of cities hire consultants to do these forms and spend quite a bit of money. James actually designs this in-house. He administers it and he does the analysis. It is a survey that's done online, different than what we used to do in the early 2000s. But we're going to just walk you through the results tonight. We've given you a full copy now of the results. So if you want to talk about it further in the future, you can just let us know and we put it back on the agenda. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to James.
Thank you, Donna. We're going to stick with some of the higher level results here, not go into great detail. Certainly I'd have to do that another time, but it's a matter of basically 19 PowerPoint slides or 37 pages of detail, and I opted for the PowerPoint. So I mean, everybody's okay with that. So I want to spend just a brief part of the presentation talking about our history with the resident satisfaction survey. Then we'll talk about the methodology used in the 2015 survey, same as in 2014, but very different from the past. And methodology does impact results in a number of ways. And they'll walk through some of those key survey results. Oh, I guess I do need this so I can push the more right button. Can't I? There we go. So for starters, this is not the first time we've done a resident satisfaction survey. It's actually the sixth. We did them back in 2000, 2002 through the University of North Texas Survey Research Center. We did them again in 2003 and 2004 through Raymond Turco and Associates. So we've used Turco and Associates for our onsite surveys of special events. Then we took a 10-year gap, and a lot of that was budget-related. Part of that was watching the, the survey field because there were some changes underway at that point. As more people were moving away from home landlines and moving toward all mobile, at that point, the random dialers couldn't reach mobile accounts. And in addition, we were noticing that to get the same 401 results was taking more and more calls each year. It used to take, you know, three or 4,000 calls. Now it's taking 10,000 to 14,000 calls. And so we wanted to wait and let the industry settle a bit and make sure this was still the standard, still the way to go. Plus, there's costs. I'll show that to you in a moment. Well, when we came back in 2014, decided it'd been 10 years, we need to get back into the survey business, we went with a lower cost option. And we did an opt-in online survey in 2014 and did another one in 2015. Now, this is an attitudinal survey. There's different types of surveys, educational and prompt and so forth. This is an attitudinal survey. You can think of it as a snapshot. At the moment in time when this survey was taken, these were the opinions that were prevalent in our community. The reason that attitudinal surveys need what's called trending, where you have two or three or even half a dozen survey results over a certain window of time to give relevance, is because that snapshot can change very dramatically over time, within a year, within a month, even within a day. And the most obvious example perhaps is think about what the public opinion was of air travel on September 10th of 2001 and what it would have been on September 11th of 2001. So historical events, events in the community, events in a family can change those attitudes very quickly. In order to get good data on attitudinal survey, you want to have multiple results over a series of years. What you'll see here is we've got 2014 and 2015 until we have 2016 results, trending is a little bit iffy. So I'm not really going to present to you trends tonight with one notable exception. We can't really trend off the older data partly because it's a different survey methodology and partly because that 10-year gap, there's so much turnover in residents that a 10-year gap is, is almost an eternity in the field of surveying. So we look at our survey methodology. I told you, we used to do random sample telephone surveys. They are still considered the industry standard. It does take more calls to get it done. There are ways now to reach some of those mobile callers that previously were not reachable, but it is still the industry standard. It's the most accurate. When you hear some of the polls for the political survey and then they talk about a, a margin of error of 4%, 5%, they can do that because it is a random sample phone survey. What that means is they know what the demographics are of their target audience, in this case it'd be the city of Louisville, and they make sure that the calls they put out and the responses they receive, that group of responders reflects the demographics of their area. So if an area is, let's say, 25% African-American, you make sure that you have 25% African-American respondents to your survey. If your target audience is 91% women, you make sure you have 91% or so women in your survey. That gives you the best reflection, the best margin of error. We get an opt-in online survey, that's not entirely thrown out the window, but it largely is. Because at that point, anybody who wants to participate can, and you cannot control the demographics of the survey. You can measure them, and sometimes you'll get similar results. You'll see with ours that some of our results were very similar to the, to the census data. Some are way off. So you lose some of the scientific validity, but you can see the cost there. We were paying 15,000 for our telephone opt-in, for a telephone random sample survey. A lot of firms now are two, three times that much for a city survey. We're paying 300 bucks a year for Survey Monkey, so it's a lot of savings. We can make up for the lack of scientific validity if we can get a very high participation rate. In the random sample surveys, we aim for 401 responses. With these, we're trying to get as many as we possibly can. There are provisions in the software to prevent one person from answering it 500 times. People will try that. We can weed those out. And what we found is in 2014, we got 1,200 results. This year, we got almost 1,500 results. That's a big number. That's almost four times what you would have had in the random sample survey. Still does not give you a scientific number, it's still more anecdotal, but it's a lot more reliable than it otherwise would have been with a smaller sample. Now, a couple of things that you need to understand also about the results of a opt-in survey. The first is that positive results tend to be about five to eight points lower on an opt-in survey than they are on a phone survey. And that's been consistent. They've done studies, there's some references in the analysis in your book about some college studies, university studies that have found this to be true consistently. When you compare two surveys, surveying the same essential group of people, the opt-in online is about five to eight points lower than the phone survey. A lot of theories on why that's the case. My own personal favorite is that when people are on the phone, they're talking to a person and they want to instinctively please that person. And so they give more positive answers because there's a person on the phone. When it's you and your computer, you can just be as mean as you want to be. We've all seen social media, right? So that's one thing to remember, is when you compare the two different methodologies, the numbers here will be a little bit lower than they typically would have been in a phone survey. The second thing is opt-in surveys online produce a much higher rate of no opinion responses. And that's again, consistent across the board. The most common theory on that is because when you're talking on the phone, you want to sound informed. You don't want to sound like, oh, no. So you never give a no opinion or an I don't know, you give an opinion. Even if you don't have one, you make up an opinion on the spot. Political surveys in particular see a lot of that. But in opt-in surveys, no one knows who you are, so if you don't know, or just don't feel like it or don't want to think about it, you click no opinion and move on. So what we have, what is pretty much the standard practice in the industry with an opt-in online survey is to factor out those no opinion responses. That's explained more in detail in your analysis, but what you'll see in some of our, our results coming up, we factored that out to give you a more accurate figure. And in some cases, it's a dramatic difference. For example, when we ask people to rate ambulance services, most people never use ambulance service. The people who use it have a strong opinion. Most of us don't. And so in that case, there was about 60-plus percent no opinion. If we'd included those in the results, you have a positive rating of about 20%. But when you factor those out, it's about 96%. So a dramatic difference in that case, and that, that happens in a number of areas. So results. Well, almost results. This is to let you know who took the survey. I mentioned earlier that there's some correlation between this and our census data. For example, 58% female, that's pretty close to our survey numbers. 60%, 45% or older, look at our adult population, that's pretty close. It's a little bit older, but pretty close. Two-thirds of no children at home, that's just dead-on to what our survey census data shows. The next two, very much different from our census. More than half the people participating had lived in Louisville 10 years or longer. And in fact, that is not the case of our general population. And the big one, 86% were homeowners. Now, the good thing is we're starting to get some of our residents to respond, and they're hard to get, but still 86% homeowners. There's good and bad to that. The bad is you are getting a skewed perception. It's people who have invested in their community, so it's not people who are, you know, here temporarily or who are renting and might be moving on. That's also a plus, especially when you talk about they're investing in service. If you talk about the taxes you pay and are you willing to pay, these are the people that are mostly paying them. And so that can be a positive for you, but it's something to remember. We also noticed that North Louisville participated at a higher rate than we would expect, 28% out of the 77. And the east side where we are now participated at a lower rate than we would expect. And then finally, the north-south split was pretty, pretty much what we would have expected. A little bit more on the south side, but that's, that's not uncommon.
James?
Yes, sir.
Let me see, 12 and 56 and 28. And I didn't see the answer to this. Is this rooftops, is this apartment, single apartments and rooftops, is this population? What is this?
This is the actual responses. Of the 1,500 people.
Oh, okay.
Of the 1,500 people who responded, 12% of them were in the 057.
So then the question is, do we have that other piece of information?
From census data, we do. And I don't have that number with me, but 057 is a higher percentage than 12. 67 is a little bit lower, 77's quite a bit lower. So this is skewed a little bit more toward the west side of the freeway, but the volume of data, we think offsets part of that.
Okay.
So our first question that we always ask, it is a resident satisfaction survey, so we ask, are you satisfied? The question actually says, generally, how satisfied or dissatisfied are you with the quality of life in Louisville? And here, we got 89% of the people said they were satisfied with life in Louisville, with better than one out of five saying they were very satisfied. That's a good number. Now, this is the one time I'm showing you trending data. It's not reliable trending, but I want to give you an idea of where that 89% fits in. And you can see that when we were doing phone random sample surveys, we were in the 93% to 96% range. The past two years, doing the opt-in online survey, we did an 88% and 89%, but remember, the studies have shown there's a five to eight percentage point drop. So if you factor that back in, we're right where we were, maybe a little better, but right where we were. It's a consistent number. What we're having to do is recalibrate our goals. Our goal used to be 95%. Now our goal is 90%. Not because we've lowered our standards, but because it's a different tool. Two other numbers I want to point out here that you'll see show up, and they're very important survey numbers that people often overlook. One is called intensity and one is called the plus ratio. Where I say 89% or 89.25% satisfaction, that combines satisfied and very satisfied. We consider those positive results. And this very satisfied, dissatisfied, and dissatisfied negative results. 22.23% intensely means that's your top number, very satisfied. And the reason that's important, marketers, professional marketers really care about that intensity figure. Because it's, it's fairly easy to get people to think something good about your brand or your product, but it's really hard to get them so excited about it, they'll go out and support you actively. They'll endorse you, they'll recommend you to their friends. So the intensity is very important. That tells you, in most cases, the people who have an intense opinion, positive or negative, are more likely to act on that opinion. So if it's a person who feels positively about the city and they're an intense positive, they're more likely to tell their friends and neighbors how happy they are. They're more likely to shop Louisville. They're more likely to go on social media and say nice things about us. The negative side, they're more likely to complain and gripe about the city to their friends and family. They're more likely to go on social media and say, you know, horrible things about Louisville. They're the ones more likely to call you. You're hearing from the intensity people. And you notice here, it's 22% intense positive and it was 2% intense negative. You add that up, that's one-fourth of the population, and that's the one-fourth you're hearing from the most, plus, plus and minus. So that's where intensity is important. And then the plus ratio is if you take all the positive responses and all the negative responses, think about it as a scale. And you put the positive on one side and the negative on the other, you want the scale to go heavily positive. That ratio tells you how positive it is. Normally, you're aiming for a four-to-one ratio or better. In this case, we had an 8.3 to one positive ratio. So we feel good about this number, not so good that we're happy with it, but good enough that we think it's a good baseline and now we can improve from there. Then we ask, over the time you've lived in Louisville, do you feel like quality of life has gotten better, stayed the same, gotten worse? You know, looking at how has the Louisville changed in the time you've lived here? And we see that 41% say it's gotten better. And that, that's a good number. It's a much higher number when you ask people who've lived here longer. This is a question where length of residency in Louisville had a huge impact. And I gave the example, only 23% of people who lived here a year or less said the city's gotten better. Not surprising. Only a year, how much change could you have seen? Well, a fourth of them said it's gotten better, so that's good. 53% who've been 20 years or longer said it's gotten better. And they've had a longer time to look at it, and they look back 20 years to now, there's improvements. So that's a good number, obviously a number that we want to improve upon. There's not a positive ratio, a plus ratio here because it's really a three-point scale. Here's where we get into that endorsement I talked about. Again, product marketers will tell you, it's great that you like your car, but we really want you to like your car so much that you tell your friends what a great car it is and have them buy one. That's an endorsement. That's what we're looking for here. We knew that people were generally satisfied with Louisville, but are they so happy with it that they'll tell their friends and family, move here? You're looking for a house, check Louisville. When we factor out that no opinion response, 82% said yes. They would move, they would, they would endorse Louisville to their family and friends. That is just barely below the approval rating. 89% for satisfaction, 82% here. Usually you see a much, much bigger gap. So we're very pleased that that gap is so small. That's a number that a lot of professional marketers out there with products would, would love to be able to take into their boardroom. And again, a 4.6 to one positive ratio. Then we went to the dollar question. We said, okay, you pay taxes, you get services. How satisfied or dissatisfied are you with the level of service you receive for the taxes paid? Not surprisingly, because now you're asking people, you know, you're paying money. The rating was a little bit lower here, 75%. And the intensity was lower than we'd like, about 14% intense positive. On this question, that's really what we want to improve, is the intense positive. Now, this is one where education probably makes a big difference, you know, educating the public to let them know, here's the services you receive, here's what you pay. It's a great example here of how this attitudinal survey was not an educational survey. We didn't educate them first on, here's the services you receive. We didn't educate them first on, here's the taxes you pay, but only this part comes to us. We just wanted to know, just off the top of your head, how do you feel about it? And then we come back and we talk to them about specific services. So the education component is not a part of the survey. It's not the type of survey it was, but it certainly can affect the outcome of this one. By the way, we compared, it was called cross-tabulation. That's where you take two different questions and take the results and put them together and compare them to see how they influence one another or where the correlations are. We compared this to the overall satisfaction, and 72% of the people were positive on both. And 7% were negative on both. That's a 10-to-one ratio. We love a 10-to-one ratio. That's a great one. So a lot of good things to look in here. The one that we really want to improve upon is that 13.9% intensity. We want that to be a lot higher, and that's something we can improve on. Then we asked about specific city services. We gave a list of 16 city services, and this list is essentially unchanged since the 2003 survey. So we've been using this list for a while. And the results have been pretty consistent since the 2003 survey. Public safety is always right there at the top. And there they are, fire, ambulance. Then you have library water, then you have police. So overall, public safety is always going to be the highest one. Of those 16 services, we asked them, do you rate it excellent, good, fair, or poor? And for us, fair is a negative response. We're not happy just being so-so or okay. We want to be good or better. So excellent, good, positive, fair, poor, negative. And 11 of the 16 services got a 70% or higher rating, which you think of as a passing mark. Not where we want it to be. We want them all to be, our goal here is 80 or higher, but 70 is a pretty good number. And then when you look at the ones down at the bottom, several of them are somewhat out of our control. Street lighting, 46%. We don't own or install streetlights, but that's an area where people are saying they're not necessarily satisfied with the street lighting as it is. Street maintenance, a lot of streets in the city are not owned and maintained by the city. So the number of state roads and the federal road that we have in town affects this number. Last year, we asked a more detailed question and we found that people were generally happy with city roads. They just were not as happy, especially arterials. They were less happy with the highways. So that one's down there. We also have found, and other cities have found, that when you ask about street conditions, when a major highway project is underway, your numbers are always lower. It's the first time that's been under 50%. So when 35 is done, and we all know it will be eventually, that number should bounce back. Code enforcement's an interesting one. It's always one of the lowest ranked, and here it's 50%. But when we asked this question back in 2004, we did a, a survey specifically on code enforcement. We saw these low numbers. We said, okay, what's going on? What do they not like? What we found was of the people who didn't like it, about half of them said, you're not doing enough code enforcement. About half of them said, you're doing too much code enforcement. So you can't make them all happy. So probably the best you can hope for in code enforcement is around 75%, just a ballpark figure. So that's a number we want to see higher, but it's never going to be perfect because there's always going to be some people who are either happy you, or unhappy you didn't enforce, or unhappy that you did enforce, because whether they got the ticket or their neighbor didn't. And sidewalks is another, remember, this is only asking, what do you think about it? It's not asking why. So sidewalks, we, we see they got a low number, but we don't know if that's because there's not enough sidewalks, or the sidewalks are too small, or the sidewalks are, need more maintenance. We don't know the why. That's one area in particular that we want to follow up in 2016 with, we're going to have two follow-up surveys on specific topics. Sidewalks is not really such a broad topic, you can do a whole survey on it. We're going to slide two or three sidewalk questions into one of those surveys to find out, is it that it takes too long to repair? And we know it takes a while. Is it because they're too narrow? Is it because there's not enough of them and you're having to walk in the grass when you go to the store? We don't know. We're going to find out. I want to share another thing with you here, and this is about fire services. 97%, wonderful number. It's a great example of why 100% satisfaction is not a realistic goal for any of these. Out of the 1,500 people who responded, three people rated fire services as poor. Three people. So we went and looked at the surveys that those three people submitted. We don't have their names, we just can look at all their results. And of those three, two of them marked nearly every question negative. One of them marked every single question with the most negative response possible. That's someone who's never going to like anything we do most likely. So there's always going to be one. So I'm not going to hold it against Chief Tittle that they had three people that said poor, because 97% is still a darn good number.
I'll take it.
There you go.
You'll take it.
All right.
Is that noise like Santa Claus coming from our house?
It could have been. Yeah, it could have been. But I tell you, the Santa Claus probably made the other numbers higher, so we'll take that trade-off. Then we ask, and this is a question we've been asking for a long time, how safe do you feel in various areas? Your own neighborhood, other residential neighborhoods, and commercial districts. And the results here has been consistent and always consistently surprising. We expect people to say they feel safest in their neighborhood, and they did. You look there, 85% said they feel safe in their neighborhood. That's a great number. Then you get outside your neighborhood, you kind of expect people to feel less safe in commercial districts, but in fact, commercial districts usually rate better than other neighborhoods. A lot of this, we think, is probably awareness. When you're in your neighborhood, you know who's there, you know the cars, you know the streets, you know the area, you just feel at home. This is another one we want to do a little digging into to find out what are the factors that make you feel more safe or less safe? Is it street lights? Is it sidewalks? Is it police patrols? Is it, you know, what is it that would make you feel safe or unsafe in an area? It's also important to notice timing on this one. Right as we were starting this survey, there were two major criminal incidents, shootings, that got a lot of attention on social media and in the news media. And so it wasn't in my neighborhood, so I still feel safe, but obviously there's problems elsewhere because there was a shooting going on. Now, we know the facts of the shooting. In fact, you know, Chief Carbo and I have talked about this. There were two murders last year, a 100% increase because you went from one to two. That's where data can throw you off. Both of them were, were people who knew each other, and both of them, we had the person arrested and in custody within, what, a week or less? So some great results there. Doesn't make me feel unsafe, but on social media, it sure looked bad. So these numbers, especially in the non, in the other areas, not your neighborhood, probably are lower a little bit because of the timing of it. Just kind of the way it goes. So we will follow up on this. It's also good to note, though, that fewer than 60 people felt very unsafe anywhere. Now, the 24 that said very unsafe in their neighborhood said very unsafe everywhere. But the rest of them, 59 people out of the 1,500 said they felt very unsafe. So it's, it's still a good number. We just want to find out more detail. We had a series of questions where we asked about four different types of facilities. The library, the senior center, parks and rec, and MCL Grand. And we first did a screening question, have you been there in the past 12 months? If they said yes, we asked them to rate service areas, anywhere from 10 to, or eight to 12 service areas. All of them gave good results. Library, all eight were in the 80s. Parks, all 10 were in the 70s. Senior center, all 10 were 75 or higher. MCL Grand, eight of the 12 were very good. They were in the 80s or higher. And three of them, the only three that had really bad numbers, were related to dining options and close-end parking. The good news is, when we ask this question again in 2017, those issues should have improved dramatically. So we feel good about these. I want to point out one thing also. All four of these, the number one rated service area was courtesy of staff. I think it speaks highly of the people that we have here, that we can't always give you what you want, but we're going to at least be polite to you when we tell you whatever it is you want to know. Courtesy of staff, top-rated in all four of those areas. So kudos to our, to our people. Getting information, we asked them to rate useless 14 tools. It was an online survey, so you expect online outlets to rate higher, and they, they did. They would have any way, we believe, but they probably got a boost of a few points by far. Website number one, the Horizon e-newsletter number two, city emails number three, social media number five. The lowest ratings went to news media, professional media, TV, radio, print, and also to our cable channel and to our online videos. And we are in the process, we've already revamped our video program once before as a result, survey results. We're doing that again now. So overall, electronic seems to be the way people want to get their information.
Electronic text.
True. Not electronic videos. They want it, they can read it. Especially want it sent to them more than anything else. They want it to be sent to them.
Yeah, because so much is YouTube-ified now, you know, 30-second.
We are changing the way we do our videos to try and make it more YouTube and social media friendly. We're going to be, not going to do a lot of detail, we're going to shorten a bunch of them, kind of change the presentation. We think we'll see some impact there. Won't affect the cable, it should affect that number.
Interesting.
And part of it's also awareness. A lot of people, when you, another survey question that is in your backup asks, are asks, are you aware about our YouTube channel? And most people said no. So we need to improve on that. We did ask about the Louisville twenty-twenty-five vision plan. How aware of it are you? And we expected, and it's a very large city plan document. Other than the people at this table and a few people in the room, most of our residents don't go home and read those documents. And the ones who do probably don't retain most of them. So we didn't expect great numbers here. Some good and some bad. We saw that half the people didn't know anything about it. A little bit discouraging, because we had done two mailings. We had done billboards. We had done all kinds of stuff. You know, something arrived in your mailbox and you looked at it. We held meetings. But half the people had not heard about it. We can improve on that, and we will. I'll explain that in a moment. But I also like the fact that if you go down below, more than fifteen percent showed a very strong interest. They knew about it. They knew what was in it. They read about it, and they were keeping up with it. So you take those bottom two categories. We think the best areas to improve are getting the "don't know about it" into the "at least I've heard of it", and then getting more people involved in the details. Later this month, we'll be mailing to all addresses in Louisville and Castle Hills a community update on the twenty-twenty-five plan. Page after page of good things that happened in two thousand and fifteen and things that are going to happen in two thousand and sixteen. In a booklet format, some photos, going to be pretty nice, going to every address. If these numbers don't improve, I don't know what else you could do except knock on every door. It would take me a long time.
Get your knuckle duster out.
Oh, I get it. But it's good to know that no matter what you do, there's always going to be some people that just don't get your message. They're not interested in it, or they missed it. And so it's always a call to do more. Providing feedback, a lot of the input we got during the twenty-twenty-five process was not about how do I get information? It's about how do I give information back? So we asked here, more than half the people, we gave them a list of ways to give feedback to the city. More than half said they'd used none. Not surprising. We don't hear from a lot of people. They're perfectly content the way things are. They're happy. They're safe. They don't call us. They'll call us if there's a problem. After that, the top tool was telephone. Might surprise you. The telephone is still the number one. But other studies, Pew Research Center, and this is in your backup, Pew Research Center has done studies. It shows that's still the number-one reason, method nationally. Now, internet is catching up, but where they're even, when people rate the importance of their call, the more important their issue is, the more likely they are to pick up the phone. They don't necessarily trust the internet to, because it's so important, they want to have a person on the phone with them. So we need to continue what we've been doing of training our people on phone use and phone etiquette and keeping our call takers informed. After that, very much electronic again. Social media, emails, and website are the next three in order. We asked, how easy is it to provide feedback? Here you see thirty-three percent had no opinion. That raw number actually correlates very closely to the fifty percent who said they hadn't even tried. So when we did a cross-tab, we saw a lot of those were the same people. However, overall approval rating, eighty percent said it's easy or somewhat easy. Thirty-seven percent were positive intensity. The intensity number here is great. It's off the chart. So good results here. Always ways to do better, but we're happy with that. And then we asked, how responsive is the city? It's not enough that we get the feedback, but what do we do with it? Here, overall, we got a good number, seventy-three percent approval. Intensity of twenty-five percent, when you adjusted no opinion out. So the intensity was really good. One-fourth of people said we are very responsive. What we found here, that's been consistent for all of our surveys and other cities, feedback is the area. Follow-up is the area where cities fall short. Part of that is we get so many calls and requests that we knock it out, we move on. And the people don't feel like we're giving them proper feedback to say, here's what happened. We've resolved this. We've moved on. Yeah, you reported your neighbor for the dogs. We talked to him, and they're going to take care of it. We're not giving them that follow-up. Now, our online system has that built in. But when people are calling them, it's the number-one reason, they, way they contact them, they're calling them, they're not always getting that follow-up. Hard to improve on that, but it's something clearly we need to be aware of. That follow-up, we can do a better job. We added this question. This is our last question for the PowerPoint, but there's much more in your backup. We added this at the request of Neighborhood Services this past year to get a gauge of how active people are in their neighborhoods. When you talk anecdotally and tell me what you like about Louisville, you hear people say it's very neighborly and very family-friendly, and you're all like a small town. We wanted to measure that in some way. And what we saw was nearly forty percent of respondents have regular interaction with their neighbors. Actually surprised me, admit that it was forty percent. These days, with mailboxes and alleys and just the way things are set up, people don't seem to interact as much. But in Louisville, forty percent of them do. So we thought that was a really good number. Only eight percent said no interaction whatsoever. That's good news for Yolanda. As she's putting together her neighborhood teams to go out there and do things, neighbors actually do know each other. Pretty good number of them. Two out of five know one another. And so they can be good resources. So a good number, and we think that number gradually can increase as well. So summary here, remember, some of these results are used by departments during the budget process as performance measures. So you'll see some numbers come back in there. We are going to do another resident satisfaction survey citywide in July. It's going to be a shorter window, a three-week window. Ideally, you want to be about ten days. We're trying to get there. We were afraid at first, nobody would respond. Well, we got fifteen hundred responses, so they're responding. We're going to shorten the window. You go, we did six weeks this time. People's opinions can change over the course of six weeks. So we're bringing that down to three this year. We'll do another, I think it is three years. So next year, you can see some trending, and you can see where things are moving over time. Hopefully improvement, but if they're not, that's something that we can pay attention to and work on. And then finally, if you take nothing else away, understand that these results overall are positive. These are good numbers in here. Some really good, some just good, but we're not happy with these. There's always room for improvement, and you'll see in your executive summary, we've already identified some areas where we can improve, whether it's service delivery or public awareness of the service that we provide. Both of those, we think we can get some better numbers going through. So any questions?
How will this be shared with the public?
We'll be sending out a, in our media packet this week, a summary of the findings. And we already have last, the two thousand and fourteen results on the website. We've been waiting till now to post the two thousand and fifteen on the website, but we will do that this week.
Will it go out as part of Horizon also?
Yes. The next Horizon is two weeks away. We just had one on Friday, but the next Horizon will have a tag to the survey results.
Okay.
YouTube videos.
And it'll be mentioned in the State of the City on February twenty-third, the Chamber Luncheon there.
What results are on the books?
They will be tomorrow. They're not today. They will be tomorrow. We didn't want the whole world to see them before you did. Now you've got them, so it's open season. Any other questions?
As far as, I know that there was a couple items in there that you'd kind of mentioned, action plans. But will we see a more detailed action plan on, I guess, by department if what's going to be going on with some of the ones that we need improvement on?
We certainly, staff will be looking at the results in much, much more detail, and we will be looking at additional action steps, yes.
Okay.
And you might see some of that come back to you as part of the budget process, if we have to have some kind of change in programming, or just as a follow-up report.
Anybody else? Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
We'll go on to the workshop on the agenda. Again, Councilman Bone and Charity are not here tonight. Item C, public hearing.
The requister is requesting that y'all continue this item to the next meeting.
To the next meeting?
We require three readings since we're missing two council members. So we notified them of that, and they did request that it be continued.
Any consent? Item one. Item two. Item three. Regular hearings. Item four. And that's it. Yeah. You going to have anything on the closed session?
We do have one item.
Okay. Nothing else?
It's late.
So much for early.
We can always, one walking out, that takes care of it.
That's it. That's true.
In the council chamber, seven of them.
Thank you, sir.
It's seven o'clock. We'll call the regular session of the City Council to order. First item will be of invocation by Councilman Daniels, and then the pledge to the American and Texas flags by myself.
Everybody rise for a moment of silent prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Next, we have item C, public hearing. It's consideration of a, an ordinance granting a zone change request from single-family residential to old-town mixed-use on a, use one, own, and approximately point one-five-one-five acre property located at four-twenty-six Milton Street. We have had a request to continue that by the applicant to continue this to the next hearing. Councilman, need to close the public hearing?
Move to close public hearing? We don't have a public hearing.
Right, we're continuing.
Okay, so Councilman first.
Motion to continue till February fifteenth, City Council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilman Gilmore. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay. Motion carries. Next item is E, excuse me, D, Vista Citizens Forum. And I've got a few cards here. Sarah Newton. And Ms. Newton, if you can give us your name and an address for the record, please.
I'm Sarah Newton. Four five five three Mahogany Lane, Copper Canyon, seven five zero seven seven.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Jim Ware, the manager of the Arts Center. As all of you are aware, we have had for the last few years an arts festival in the spring. This year, it's being expanded and has been rebranded to be called Colorpalooza, and involving more people in the festivities on April the ninth. In honor of that occasion, we had a contest among student artists to come up with a new logo for Colorpalooza. And I'm standing here with the young lady who has been selected. Her artwork has been selected, and she's going to reveal it to you here tonight. So Sarah, please reveal the new design. Thank you, Sarah, and congratulations.
There we go.
And there is a gift for you. I think the council has already been given the first items with that logo on it. So I hope you all join us on April the ninth.
Thank you. Ms. Newton? And next up is Bill Franz. Name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Bill Franz, nineteen thirteen Wild Horse Corral, in the city of Louisville. May I approach the council and give them out some handouts?
If you want to bring them up?
Yeah. The new LED lighting installed in the middle of January in the Louisville Senior Center leaves a very cold, chilling blue cast on everything. You see the color up in those television screens? That's the color the whole room is over there under the new lighting. These blue-white lights have the wrong color lighting for senior center hospitality. This is fifty-seven-hundred K temperature. That's the rating of the bulb. Is generally designed for use in commercial, industrial, institutional, prison, and factory four lighting. The other color available from this particular manufacturer who's doing the lighting change is a four-thousand K temperature, which is a cool white, which is a much better true white color without the blue cast. It'd be a warmer light for us. The lighting out front of your building on those poles are four-thousand K white lights, not fifty-seven-hundred. The higher the number, the more blue it is. A warm and inviting hospitality color of three-thousand K or less would be a better choice. As you go through the pictures, if you please, number two is a picture of the, of the center at the time that they were changing it out. In the far end of the room, the LED blue light is in. At the closer end of the picture, the warm light is in. In this third picture, number three, the hall white, hall lighting is still warm, but as you look through the door, you can see that there's the blue room in there. Number four is actually an explanation of all the places that colored lighting should be used. Number five is an example of different colored lightings under different situations. This is taken in a, at the Batteries Plus Store, which is next door to Albertson's, and they have this exhibit for twenty-seven-hundred K, four-thousand K, and fifty-seven-hundred K, which shows you the color. The next picture is actually showing a picture of an elderly woman under these different lights. In the first picture, she's warm. In the middle picture, she's kind of white. And then in the last picture, the high-numbered lighting, she actually washes out to a purple because the blue lighting washes out her makeup. The last light, the last picture is about the results of a spectrometer reader that I have with this machine right here. Outdoor lighting is about fifty-five-hundred, which is normal outdoors noonday light. The kitchen in the senior center is about, is rated at three-three thousand. The actual reading, what we got on the meter was thirty-six hundred. The large room, which, the large room in the senior center, which is where most of the activities, and they spend all day long, is about, is rated with a new LED lighting at fifty-seven-hundred, and I'm reading, getting a reading of fifty-four hundred. The library currently, the city library, down near the police station, interior lighting in there is three-thousand K right now, which is warm fluorescent lighting. Fluorescent lighting has these spikes in the picture. LED lighting tends to have a more smooth picture. The gym in the Memorial Recreational Center and also in the hurrying gym have all been changed out to new LED lighting, and a lot of people are complaining they are now blue. Didn't, not as warm as they used to be. There is a classroom in the hurrying system, in the hurrying room, which still has three-thousand writing, lighting, and it's a nice warm light. The annex hall, in the hallways of the annex building, they have already changed it to five thousand. And then the bottom line is that Batteries Plus, I went down there and actually took the pictures of their different lights, and those are the results of those lights. I encourage that the city not-
Mr. Franz, you have one minute.
And do you have any questions?
Thank you. Next person is Steve Sheal. Maybe saying that wrong. Sir, if I could have your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Steve Shealy, three-two-two Lake Park Road, Louisville, Texas.
Go ahead.
I frequent Lake Park, Louisville for basically my entire life. And I'm just rather upset at the park ranger who consistently keeps harassing people. He is supposed to be, obviously, a representation of the city of Louisville and their parks. This gentleman has been harassing people from myself, amongst other hundreds of other peoples, who basically he will pull people over as they're driving through the park with lights, like a police officer, and a siren pulls you over and says you are speeding. I look at him, and I say, well, how fast was I going? No answer. It's just the constant harassment of this gentleman that's, it's getting very old. It's basically run off people from wanting to use Lake Park. And I don't see any need for his actions, the way he's acting towards people. I was actually down helping a buddy of mine at Tower Bay, one of your boat ramps, who had a flat tire on his trailer. I pulled down there to fix his tire for him. He was the only truck and trailer in the entire parking lot. As I'm changing this tire, of course, I drove my pickup right up next to it, which I do have a Lake Park pass. I obviously did not have my trailer with me because I was there to fix his flat tire. Lonnie shows up and asks me for my driver's license. I said, why do you need my driver's license? I said, I'm here just to fix my friend's flat tire. Lonnie says, I need your driver's license. So I took my driver's license out, and I handed it to him, and he gets his ticket book out. And I said, are you going to write me a ticket? And he says, yes, sir, you're in this parking lot without a trailer. I said, Lonnie, it's plain as day. I'm here changing a gentleman's tire, and I will be leaving directly after. He said he was going to write me a ticket. I got rather upset with him. He jumped in his truck and just left. I mean, he just consistently is harassing people for no reason, pulling people over, driving through the park, telling them they're speeding. He's basically impersonating a police officer, which last time I checked was a felony. And if that's the way your park ranger wants to act, I have a problem with it. Also, this same gentleman has a daughter living in a trailer in the same lake park, right next to him. Free rent, doesn't pay for water, doesn't pay for electricity, and has even built a patio onto her trailer, which, according to the Corps of Engineers, is not supposed to be there. But yet, this man seems- is not supposed to be there. But yet this man seems to get away with it. It's been four years she's been living there and I have a problem with that. I mean, there's been several incidences. One recently when the park was last open, a gentleman was in there, a Hispanic man. He was grilling out, cooking his food for his family. Obviously there was a burn ban. Lonnie pulls up in his truck and confronts the man. He's very abrasive. He's not a very good people person at all. Very abrasive with this gentleman. The gentleman said something to him. Lonnie gets a five-gallon bucket, walks down to the lake, fills that bucket full of water, and comes up and throws it all over the gentleman's food while it was on his grill. And that was the end of that issue. But it's just things like this that as myself, we don't need this harassment. We don't need this guy impersonating a police officer, riding around harassing the people that are using your city park, and we're fed up with it. That's all I've got to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, Louis Adams. Sir, if we could have your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Louis Adams, 559 Northside Avenue. First of all, I want to thank all y'all for your service here and allowing me to speak. Myself, I guess I'm kind of, apparently outside they told me I'm the spokesperson for our little group back here in the back of, or fishermen back here. So I'm here to talk about the fees out at the park for the boat ramps. In the past, I don't know how many years, but forever, we've, there's certain fees that we pay to utilize the boat ramps or the park in general. $50 for a resident, 25, I'm sorry, $50 for non-resident, 25 for a resident, 1250 for a senior for a yearly pass. I guess in November, construction started out there, so we went from having two ramps at Lake Park and one ramp at Tower Bay to just being able to utilize the ramp at Tower Bay because of some, I'm not really sure, bike trail, some kind of construction went out at the lake. Starting this month, I guess currently now we have two options as far as being able to utilize the only ramp available to us, which is Tower Bay. First option is we can pay $10 per day to launch, which is obviously would be more expensive for residents that have been in the past, have always paid the residence fee. Or you could pay the $60 for the pass at, I'm not sure, it's LELA, I believe it's L-L-E-L-A is the abbreviation. That $60 will gain you entry into that park as well as you can use the ramps at Lake Park when they're finished and Tower Bay, which again currently is the only one available right now. So we went from being able to pay 25 for myself, 1250 for my folks and other folks that I know that are senior citizens to use the ramp, to having to pay either $10 per day or $60 for the year. So that's, that's why I'm here. We don't understand why, apparently the passes will be issued or we will be allowed to purchase these passes suppo, in June. We don't know when it's going to be ready, but that's kind of the, what we think is going to happen, May, June, we're not really sure. We'll be allowed to purchase them then, but up until that point, we have to spend $60 up until that point, and I'm assuming they'll be good after that, or we have to spend $10 a day. Well, what I'm here is asking you guys to allow us, who are more than ready to use, I mean, it's been great weather here lately, so we're pumped up and ready to go to the lake, to let us purchase these passes because we already know we can only use Tower Bay. That's the only ramp available and that's what we, we've only been allowed to use Tower Bay since November anyways. So we don't understand, I guess, that's why I'm here, and I'm asking you guys to consider letting us purchase these passes. And there's several other people that are, that are interested in doing this, but I've decided we're gonna, I'm going to come to my first council meeting tonight and ask you guys personally. Never been, never done this before, so pretty nervous, but I just, it doesn't make sense that we can't spend the $25 that we've been doing, I know since I've been driving. So I'm 37, I've lived here my whole life. So, and I've been utilizing that park with my family. My family's lived here since 1958. So, for years. And I'm sure others have the same story. I'm not going to go and I've lived here 100 years. It doesn't matter if I just moved here. We want to have that available option that's available to us, that's always been available. It just doesn't make sense why we have to pay more when the fees are still the same technically on the website, the ordinances anyways. All the fees are still, still there, but we're not given the option to purchase this pass because Lake Park's not currently open. The answer was, Lake Park is not open, so we're not going to sell these passes until it's open. So here's your two options. And we just don't, I guess, I hate to say we don't think it's fair, but we don't think it's fair. So we're asking to let us pay the same price as we've always paid. We're ready to do it whenever y'all are. We just don't want to have to wait and we don't have to spend more money than we really should, in my opinion. So that's why I'm here. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you. And you're always welcome back, remember that.
I hope, I don't want this, it's a big deal, man. I'm scared to talk in front of the public.
Thank you.
Eric, if I could ask you to meet with the gentleman, discuss this.
Next item is E, consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary and do not have anything to be pulled. Councilman Gilmore?
Move to approve the consent agenda as written. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we're down to regular hearings, F, number four, consideration of a variance to the 1996 Castle Hills Agreement regarding paving on a public waterline easement related to podium, carting, and events located at 5200 State Highway 121. Comments? The property has an existing city waterline and an easement along the north side of the lot. The requested variance is to allow pavement within the waterline easement. The owner accepts responsibility for all pavement repairs required due to the maintenance or repair of the city waterline. Recommendation is that the city council approve the variance as set forth in the caption above with the condition that in the event of water main maintenance or repair, maintenance or repair of the pavement within the easement is the responsibility of the property owner. And I do have a card here with Kevin, is it Kimbro, Jimbro? Okay, and you're here in case you, are there any questions? Okay. Councilman Daniels?
Make a motion to close public hearing?
We don't have to have that. This is just a regular hearing.
Oh, okay. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any other discussion?
Just for clarification, is that move to approve with a condition?
What was?
Is that a motion to approve with a condition?
With the condition?
Yes.
Yes, and the second was that also?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item is G, reports. Start over here. Tim, you're in. Okay. Lake level? I'm going to stop one of these days, so.
No, don't. I want to hear it.
Okay, did you hear it then or?
No, I didn't.
Lake level, so what do you got?
52594. It's down just about a foot since last week. Still about four feet above the concentration.
And that's his plan, they're doing that to try to get the water out of the lake?
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
So if all goes as expected about 20 days or something to get back to conservation?
I'm sorry?
If all goes as, as expected about 20 days to get back to conservation?
If it maintains the same rate of flow and there's nothing added to the lake, that's, that's correct.
Okay.
Eric doesn't have anything? Okay.
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay.
Just a quick announcement, Mayor. LELA has their reservations for their spring break Eco Adventure Camp. This is for grades four through seven and it's during spring break week. It's a great program and it's a great opportunity to get your kids outdoors and enjoy the weather. Hopefully it'll be beautiful and during the spring break timeframe. But all you have to do is pop onto the city website, look at the news at the bottom, and you'll find it right there.
Okay, city manager?
No, sir.
Councilman?
Mayor, thank you. I've got several things for the MCO Grand. First of all, in live performances, we have the Spanish Mozart. I mentioned that last time around. This is a composer that was a child prodigy like most art, only he was from Spain. That concert's February 19th, presented by Lewisville Lake Symphony. Unfortunately, I have an obligation with the Certain City Retreat, I believe, so I'll miss that one.
Sorry.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
I thought so. Another presentation by the NCTC Drama of Flower Mound is Almost Maine, is in the state of Maine, and that is February 19th and 20th. And then Texas Tunes will continue with its second concert, Trout Fishing in America on February 13th. I've heard nothing from people that I talked to that are very familiar with the music scene, except you got to go see this concert. These two guys are very entertaining and more than just their music. Public events, KOB has a gardening class on February 18th, presented by the city of Lewisville, and the Visual Arts League always has their Friday night jam sessions, which keep growing and keep expanding and there's a lot of people that come to those. Art exhibits, LISD Art Show, the high school portion opens February 5th in the Grand Gallery and the AZL Award Winners' Choice opens February 27th in the North Corridor Gallery. And that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, anything? City Secretary, anything? Officer, thanks for being here tonight. We do appreciate your work and all your team members that work with you also. Thank you. We're down to item H, close session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, 1, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, legal issues related to conflict of interest, 2, Section 551.072, real estate property acquisition, and 3, Section 551.087, economic development, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. And we'll go into closed session now. Convene into regular sessions. Is there any action to be taken?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
And happy birthday.